To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. Is there anyone else present who's recording or planning to record during this meeting? I acknowledge that there is no one here. All right. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the regular school committee meeting of June 20th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting June 20th, 2017?
Second.
Any corrections or discussion with regard to that? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or negative vote? None unanimous. Okay. There is no public, so I guess we don't have any comments.
It's safe tonight.
We have good news.
It is the summer. That is the, that is the good news of the evening.
Don't forget, nope.
Oh.
The math teacher. Matt?
Oh yeah, this was just in the, the paper maybe a week or so ago. Matthew Barranavant had a book that was published. So that was, that was good. When he comes to do the, the next math update for the committee, we'll make sure he brings a copy.
Is the seventh grader co-author?
She was unbelievable.
Oh my lord.
Yeah. No, he, she did very well. And no, we're happy for him. Quite an accomplishment. So, no other, no other good news this evening.
Okay. So then we're into new business with staff appointments?
Yep. We have, we've overall kind of light agenda this evening. It's a lot of cleanup from the current year. I just wanted to make a few announcements. I'd send, sent a few emails out with regard to a couple of our recent appointments that are more central office-based or school-based. But we were able to hire Diana Fullreader. She is going to join us as the principal of Center Elementary School. Diana has spent the last number of years in Groton Dunstable as an assistant principal and prior to that had been in Tingsborough. I will invite these individuals to come to a meeting so that you can meet them and they can talk a little bit about what they envision for the jobs that lies ahead. It's just very difficult during the summer to coordinate vacation schedules, so we'll arrange for them to come to the first meeting in September so that you can meet with them. We were also able to hire John Morris as our science coordinator. John had been a teacher at Chelmsford High School for a number of years, had left to be the STEM coordinator in Melrose, and I wanted to come back to Chelmsford. So John just joined us last week. He's back in. He's going to do a lot of his work is going to be focused on not only the middle and high school science programs, but working a lot with the elementary schools as they implement the new science standards and the science kits in their buildings. So John's going to be joining us again. Kelly Rogers, who was the principal of Center Elementary School, is going to be staying on board in a different capacity. So she's going to be taking Lori McDermott's role as coordinator of reading, ELL and Title I. Kelly was, has been a great person to work with over the last couple of years and we were sad to see her go as the center principal. She really wanted to stay within the district. She likes Chelmsford, but was just looking for a different challenge. And she was interested in exploring, bless you, interested in exploring that coordinator role. So it really worked out well where she knows us and she knows the schools. She'll be a welcomed addition taking over for Lori as, as she gets into that role. And then Peter Brakalas was hired as our transportation coordinator. So Peter just joined us a week or so as well. He's got a lot of work to do this summer getting all of our bus routes ready to go for September. But Peter's going to be working with Joanna in the business office and he'll be another face and name to be heard. So I just wanted to make that announcement. But we'll invite all these people to come to a future meeting so that you can meet them and talk a little bit about the work that lies ahead.
It's almost, it should belong, belongs under good news. That's great.
Well, that could have been good news.
Congratulations, Jay. I know there's been some other people that, you know, Linda, talk to her. She's been doing an unbelievable job. So please let her know that, how happy we are with that.
Yep. No, I certainly will. Linda is actually on vacation this week, but she stepped in to help us out at Harrington as we're still searching for a principal at Harrington School. She's helping us do some of the last minute hiring that's taking place at that school. So I'll certainly let, let her know that and I'll, I'll share your comments. Great.
As a courtesy, we've gone past public input. Did you want to speak to us tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to listen to the personnel. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Second item of the agenda this evening is an update on the fiscal 2017 year-to-date budget reports and transfers. You have a memo from Joanna that talks about the fund balance with all of our different unit reports. And I'll walk you through a little bit of that. One of the things that, the information that we're going to provide this evening is all preliminary because technically we have until July 15th to close the books for 17. So there's still a bill draft that you'll be signing and warrants that are going to be paid on Friday. So we're going to present preliminary numbers to you and a preliminary recommendation to close the, the fiscal year. But then at the August meeting, we'll actually come back and report what the final numbers were. With the year not being closed, we're just not able to do that at this time. Then the other thing I did do is I gave you a one-page sheet that I'll just kind of walk you through some of the, the big numbers on. Happy to answer any questions that you have. Joanna goes through and she outlined some of the variances within the local operating budget. Some of the accounts are favorable. Some are going to need some transfers at the end of the year to clean up actual expenditures. But the long and the short of it is we actually have two budget adjustments that we need to make to, to close out the year. So on the third page of her memo, there's a notation about the food service negative balance at $11,452. So this is something we talked about last year as well. Over the course of the year, if there are students who are not able to pay for their lunches at school, we still provide a lunch to them and we have to accrue whatever the cost is. The food service department in the schools work all year long to try to collect the funds, but inevitably at the end of the year, there's always some funds that go unclaimed. And the school department, before we close the books for the fiscal year, needs to go in and satisfy any of that outstanding debt. Now, the collection efforts will continue into the next year, but you still need to kind of shore up your accounts at fiscal year end. So at the end of the financial report, there's an actual detailed listing just with the student ID numbers, not the student names, and the dollar amounts that were outstanding so that you can see the, the dollar amounts by person. Again, the collection efforts will remain, but the deficit balance stands at $11,452. So we would need a motion to allow $11,452 to be funded from the general fund to cover that unpaid student lunch deficit.
You said $11,000? I have a sheet that has. Is that different?
Yeah. Joanna can explain. That's the cumulative report that comes out of the computer.
This is the third page, yeah.
No, I'm just making sure because the numbers were different. So this is a different.
So if you, if you took the amount that we actually wrote off last year and deducted it from that, it would equal the $11,000.
Got it. Okay.
And that was to the student lunch program?
Yeah, to the, we're going to make a transfer to the food, food, school lunch program.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $11,452 from the general fund to the student lunch program.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any abstention or negative vote? Hearing none unanimous.
Thank you. And then after that transfer, what ends up happening is when you look at our year-to-date budget report, it ends up with a deficit balance of $1,008,02. So that's where the, the one-page kind of cheat sheet comes in for you. And one of the things, when we set the budget, our appropriated value was $54,550,000. And there were two revenue offsets in the budget. The first was the circuit breaker offset for special ed tuition and the second was an offset for school choice. And what we ended up doing all year long was recording all the expenses against the local operating budget for special ed tuition and not making transfers as the year went, knowing at the end of the year, we would go in and just do one cumulative kind of cleanup transfer. It's a lot easier for accounting purposes to, to book. So if you look at my spreadsheet on the left, it says original budget plan. And again, you have the appropriated budget of $54.5 million. And we were going to be offsetting 2.9 and then $230,000 in school choice revenue. In the middle column, that $1,008,02531, that's the same amount that is listed on the memo in front of you after the school lunch transfer just occurred. That is the only amount that we need to actually transfer to bring the accounts whole at the end of the year. So if you look at that, and I'm going to explain what the difference is, technically it's $1,097,469 and then $230,029 will not be necessary to, to transfer in to the school choice or the circuit breaker account. Now, one of the things that we always do, that's because over the course of the year, we've built up little surpluses in different lines of the budget. At the end of the year, you know, sometimes someone will employ a fiscal strategy of kind of spending down your accounts. What we typically do is try not to do that. We don't want to spend frivolously, but we would rather actually accrue some balances in the accounts that go unfunded and then be able to put aside some of that funding for future year expenses. So one of the allowable ways to do that is towards, to help defray the costs of future special ed, say tuition or unknown students might come into the district. We want to try to build up our circuit breaker fund and you're able to do that and carry over a full year's allocation of funding. So we're going to be able to continue to do that practice. It's a good, strong financial practice. But when you look at the total savings after that $1,008 is basically transferred, the total savings in the operating budget is $1,327,498. Now, of that $1,327,605,474 was the actual amount that would have been the set aside for the, the salary reserve. So the true, but we had counted on that being spent. So the true amount of the actual carryover or the, the unexpended funds is $722,024, which again, as a percentage of our overall, overall budget, is coming in at about, you know, 98.7% expended, which I think is actually pretty good. You always obviously want to be in the black. You don't want to be in the red when you're doing budgeting. But if we're anywhere between half a million and a million dollars, I think that's, puts us in really good shape. It allows us to then roll that money to the following fiscal year in circuit breaker. In the event a student comes in, you know, that we were accounting on from another district replacement, ends up being more costly than we had budgeted, it allows you that, that flexibility. So again, I think it's a, it's a, you know, strong financial practice to do that. What we're recommending is actually rolling the whole $1,327 into the circuit breaker account by basically not doing the transfer. But I just wanted to break down those two numbers for you so that someone wouldn't think we actually under-expended the budget by $1,003. We really under-expended it by $722. It was just the $605 was the amount that was expended on the, the salary transfers. So if you read the motion in blue below, that would be what I would recommend the committee adopt. And again, in the first line, it says estimated to be $1,080,0531. That's before the books close. So this is more of an intent type motion. We think it's going to be right around that number, but obviously it's going to vary by some dollars here or there. By voting this, this evening, we'll come back in August with the final vote, but I'd like the school committee to be on record, actually just showing the intent of the vote. And basically the intent being to take any remaining fund balance in the local operating budget and have it be offset to circuit breaker so that that money then carries over to the following year. And just to the point of reference, your circuit breaker number is around two and a half million dollars. So you're still significantly under the two and a half million dollars that you can legally roll over. So you don't have any issues on that front.
How much is in circuit breaker?
No, you, you get about 2.5 a year.
Right. Okay.
So you can roll over that much.
Oh, got it. Understood. Got it.
That's why you'll be rolling over the, you know, the $1,003 here, but you're not going to come close to that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to transfer FY '17 special education tuition expenses estimated to be $1,802,531 to the circuit breaker revolving fund from the special education tuition account to the balance, to the balance the FY '17 local operating budget. Further, report at the August 15, 2017 school committee meeting that the actual amount of the expense transfer will be recorded to the balance of the FY ' '17 local operating budget as well as the revolving fund balance, balances as of June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
There is discussion. So I think what's really important is, for the very first time in a long time, this $605 that was, is not technically supposed to be there right now. Would you agree?
Yeah, we, we would have thought that would have been expended.
Exactly. Could you just take a minute, Mr. Superintendent, and explain to the people that are paying attention and watching us today, why you're doing that and what that means?
Sure. So for all, you know, practical purposes, at the end of the school year, what these final adjustments are doing is bringing your budget into balance. And you obviously want to balance to the penny. You don't want to over expend. You don't want to under expend. You want to make sure you're obviously reporting properly. So we had different set-asides within the budget and one of them was obviously for the contract negotiations. And there were a couple of contracts that still have not been finalized, but we had money that was set aside in fiscal '17 to fund those contracts. So where the money is still under the school committee's purview at the end of the year, what this action is doing, you, you can't technically roll money over from one year to another to pay for salary increases. The school committee has limited ability to carry money from one fiscal year to another. One way of doing that is you do have control over special education, circuit breaker funds and, and other limited funds. The clean way of doing this is actually to basically capture any remaining funds that you have at the end of the year and roll them. And we're estimating at this point in time it being about $1,003 to your circuit breaker account, to which then next year you have access to that money. So it would require a school committee vote to basically move funds, you know, within the circuit breaker account or from one portion of the budget to another portion of the budget. But what this is doing is allowing you basically to legally carry funds from one fiscal year over to another for, for an appropriate and allowable purpose. That's the intent of this.
So I just, I think that's important for transparency because if somebody's looking at this, they're saying, okay, we're moving FY '17 into FY '18. Okay? So this $605,000 is actually the salary increase that we were planning on giving the teachers, but because the contract's not negotiated and signed, we're carrying it forward in order not to go back to town meeting and ask the town for the money back if that was to go back into the FY '17 reserves. Am I saying it so far?
Yeah, you're basically keeping the money within the school committee's control. And the school committee will still need to take action in fiscal '18 to move money, say from a circuit breaker account or another fund in the budget. But this is, and you have that ability because you're not at the cap of circuit breaker. So you have that ability to be able to do that.
And I just, I just also want to point out that this was, this was something that we all talked about and the town manager was here. And this was a recommendation that Paul Cohen made. And this was a good idea in order to be able to disperse that at a later time.
Yes, it's allowable and it's been done in the past from what I understand. And what I wanted to do by breaking out those numbers though is, is I wouldn't want someone looking at the school budget and saying, well, why didn't you spend a million and a half dollars? Well, a piece of it was anticipated to be spent. It just didn't get spent in that fiscal year. So we just want to account for that. But also, I think, you know, spending 99% of your budget and doing it well, I think goes a long way. I'm also happy that we're able to start to again, build that cushion, even aside from the $600,000, be able to build that cushion within the circuit breaker fund. Because, you know, that then helps us not be in a position like we were a couple of years ago where you had a couple of move-ins and we had some unaccounted-for special ed costs. We had to go back to the town for half a million dollars. If we can build those reserve funds that are within the school committee's purview, that then provides you a cushion or a buffer if things, you know, that are unexpected come up during a year. And I think it's just, it's putting you in a good light administratively and I think also operationally to be able to have certain reserve funds which you can have, that again, you control. And if you, if need be, you can vote to move money from one fund to another fund without having to go back to either FinCom or town meeting. But you're really kind of controlling your destiny within your own budget. You're doing it in a sound way.
Yeah. And, and I think that's important. You know, people that are watching us or people that are paying attention to the budget, you know, this is, this money is set aside for the teachers. It's the teachers' 2% increase. We're holding on to it and we plan on expending that money at some future date. And that $605,474 will get transferred back and pay the teachers their salary that is representative of 2017. Would that be accurate?
It's 100% within the school committee's purview.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, any further, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or negative vote? Unanimous.
The, the only other thing I'd like to draw your attention to with the back of the packet that Joanna put together is the grant and revolving fund spreadsheet. It's the spreadsheet that has some blue and orange in it. This, again, I'm just, it's kind of good news to report. But, you know, all of your grant revolving funds are, are in the black, you know, as far as June 30th goes. There's no, no issues on, on any of the finances there. I think the other positive, again, because we've been able to generate some savings within the fiscal '17 budget, we don't have to make that offset to the school choice fund. And the school choice fund is another fund that's 100% within the purview of the school committee. So again, we've been trying to build up some reserves and keep some reserves within the school committee's purview. So it, we're anticipating at this point in time, the school choice carryover amount will be just shy of a million dollars at $988,000. But again, that's money that is, it's not budgeted. It's not allocated for particular purpose. It's more of a reserve fund for the school committee at this point in time where you can vote to utilize that funding basically in any way that you want to, to support the educational program that you have. The reason that we're, I'm recommending, you know, that you basically don't allocate the $230,029 to that account because that account has even more flexibility to you than the circuit breaker account does. So you always want to allocate and give yourself most flexibility whenever possible. So by not putting any money back against the school choice revenue offset, you're just giving yourselves more, more flexibility in fiscal '18. But again, I just think that's another positive, you know, positive outlook on the fiscal '17 budget. You're finishing the year in very strong financial shape. You're starting to, to build reserves both in special education and in school choice. And as I said, I'm very happy to report all of your grants and other revolving funds are all in the, in the black. And, you know, they're looking, they're looking solid.
Alan, you've been on the board for a long time. When's the last time we've built up that kind of reserve?
Long time.
Long time. Congratulations, Jay. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. But it's honestly, it's actions of the committee as well in approving the budget and, you know, not, not overextending yourselves in certain areas. So it's, it's been a pleasure. And, you know, I'm happy to report, you know, you're really moving in the right direction financially.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanna. I know you're working hard over there.
That's it for the financial update. And again, these are just preliminary. You'll get finals in, in August when we get there. Third report of the evening is personnel report. And this comes to us from the personnel office. Cheryl Kirkpatrick tracks for us all the different information on new hires and resignations and retirements. And again, this is just a list that we like to provide on a monthly basis to, to allow you to see some of the movement within the district, some of the new faces you'll be seeing and be able to report some of the people that are either transferring within the district in the case of like a Kelly. in the case of, like, Kelly Rogers, where she's moving from center principal to the coordinator of reading in Title One, or leaving the district. But this is a list of all the different personnel transactions for the month of June, and again, happy to just share that with you for, for information purposes.
Page four, Brian Deschler. Eighth grade, and it says high school. Is that an error?
Yeah, that's an error. Brian Deschler is a teacher at Chelmsford High School. He was at, this year, he was displaced down to the middle school. He was going to be, moved to Parker Middle School for the, for next school year, and I think that's where the mistake happened.
So he was at the high school?
He is at the high school currently.
Yeah.
He was one of the, he was a math teacher that was reduced, so he was going over to fill a vacancy that we had at Parker, but he has accepted a job in another district as a math teacher back at a high school level. I forget the high school, but I think that's why there's a discrepancy on, on the two.
Okay.
But happy to answer any other questions you might have, but again, it's more for just recording purposes and keeping you in the loop with personnel transactions.
Nice to see Alison Wazak hired as a kindergarten teacher. She, she's a graduate of Chelmsford School since she did her student teaching at Biim, and now she's going to be a kindergarten teacher.
Good. I know we're not on the good news section of the, the agenda anymore, but on a positive note, kindergarten-related, the, the last set of modular classrooms arrived today at Harrington.
Passed them on the rotary this afternoon.
Yeah, there were only three of them were supposed to come, but all eight of them came today, and the crane is already in place, they're going in at seven AM tomorrow morning. So all, that was a big hurdle. All four of our schools, all the structures are physically on-site and now under construction. So that was a, that was a big hurdle to overcome.
On budget, ahead of schedule.
On budget, on schedule. On budget, on schedule at this point. We don't want to jinx ourselves. But yeah, it's, it's going pretty well. I met with Alana from the Lowell Sign yesterday to do a story on the move to full decay and everyone, the hiring and whatnot, to get ready for it with the mods, so I'm sure there'll be a story coming soon on that front. But it's just good to actually see them on-site. You always kind of wonder when something's being built offsite and trucked in, but yeah, those are going to go in the ground tomorrow, so.
You know, I think what's interesting is they're, and I'm going to say it just like this, there were a lot of naysayers at town meeting that didn't think we, we as a board, or you as a superintendent, was going to be able to pull this off, but they're all here, they're on-site, we're on budget, and we're on track.
We're on the budget. On the budget.
That's right.
But we're on time.
Well, we're on the new budget.
We're on time, right.
Just don't jinx anything.
I don't want to say we're too far ahead of schedule, because we're...
How are the enrollment numbers?
Good, they really haven't shifted much from the last time I reported.
Biim's still high.
Biim, yeah, I think Biim might be at a hundred and one right now, so I'm glad we put that fifth teacher in. The next highest number is Harrington at ninety-two, and then South Row and Center both drop off pretty significantly, they're in the high seventies or eighties. Keeping an eye still on Harrington, but at this point in time, we're at, I think, three hundred and fifty, this is off the top of my head, like, three hundred and fifty-eight or three hundred and fifty-nine total kindergarten kids enrolled, and the NSDEC projection was three fifty. So I'm still feeling good about that, that we've captured the, the group. Again, the hard part was, we can't dictate, we didn't know what, like, neighborhood they were going to be coming from to see which school they were going into, but I don't think there's, you know, knock on wood, that many more kids coming out of the woodwork. We're seeing a little bit of the transitional stuff that we see every summer, some people moving, you know, into, into housing, out of housing, but we're hovering right around three fifty-eight, three fifty-nine, so I'll update you in August if you want, I can certainly put the numbers on the August meeting.
Biim has, in the, in the past, had a big jump in, in the month of August for some bizarre reason.
You know, and I, I don't doubt it, it's just where we added the fifth position already. I know that we're not in any fear of going over that.
I'm in Harrington.
Harrington, yeah, Harrington's having a lot of in and out, to be honest with you right now.
Harrington, August is, you just can't even project. We had forty kids one, one year.
We'll keep an eye on it.
All I know is this, all I know is there's three hundred and sixty children that are going to have full decay at no expense to their mothers and fathers or guardians. That's a big deal in the town.
It's huge. People are yelling "thank you" in the parade.
That's a big deal, and Jay, I want to, once again, you and Lynda and the entire administration, thank you very much, it was a lot of hard work, and certainly this board, former members of the board, Michael and...
And Paul Cohen.
Paul Cohen, the administration, Paul was unbelievable, and I just want to thank everybody, that's, that's a big, big deal.
It'll be, it'll be a nice thing to celebrate in September, you know, it'll be good when we open. A lot of work's gone into it on all fronts, the, again, I mean, Paul from the beginning, even just the funding avenue has been great.
Yeah, he's been terrific.
DPW's been really overseeing the day-to-day builds, so Gary and Kathleen have been great to work with. Just, it's a lot of people coming together to make it happen, but I'll be happy in September when we open the doors and, and we're going. But no, it's a big accomplishment, I'm looking forward to, to kicking it off in September.
If we could just go back to personnel for a minute, how are we doing with hiring? Are we pretty much filled?
Yeah, all in all, on the admin front, the, the only admin that's still hanging out there is the Harrington principal, and that's something I am working on personally. On the teaching front, we're down to less than half a dozen positions, and some of that is some of migration that, that happens, but not too, too much teacher hiring left. We're now shifting into paraprofessionals and school secretaries and school clerks. So there's always, there's a handful of powers that have to get hired every summer. We actually talked about those this morning. But I think, to be honest with you, we're ahead of schedule from where we were last year, so I think we're in, in good shape all, all around on that.
Any update on the, the repair on the, well, not repair, but updating the fan speeds?
You know what, I don't. I can, I can inquire for you.
Yeah, I'd like to find out. It hasn't come up in a while, so.
Has construction begun on the accordion doors at the high school?
I believe Monday. The contract was awarded the same, it went out to bid as two separate projects, there was a project for the demolition work, and then there was a project for the installation of the walls. The same contractor was the low bidder on both projects, so they're going to be doing all the work, which is actually, I think, going to be to our advantage, because it'll just be easier for mobilization and, and watching the projects. But Monday, I believe, they're starting the demo, and then the walls will follow suit, and they're estimating about a ten-to-fifteen day period, so that'll go pretty quick once it gets started. The big thing for us is trying to keep the cleaners at bay, because we really want to get the walls out, the accordion walls out, so that we can thoroughly clean the floors between the rooms before the new walls go in, just to not have to get up too close to the walls when we're finishing later on. It's more of a coordination issue, but...
Lot of furniture in the halls there.
Well, yeah, I mean, most of it's been moved out, not only for the accordion walls, but for the floor stripping and everything. All three cleaning companies are really hitting it pretty hard. That was, you know, when we, in August, I anticipate doing my kind of year review of what happened last year, and, you know, report on the cleanliness of the schools and those cleaning contracts, but I have to say, I'm, I'm still very impressed with all three contractors. But if you look back to, like, how many complaints or calls I got this past year about cleaning issues, you can count them on one hand.
Right.
Where, you know, a year ago, we were getting calls and pictures sent to me, you know, on a daily basis. So all three companies, they're going to have an easier summer this year because they did all the, the heavy clean that was required last year, but I think we're going to be in solid shape on that front. The bigger issue is we're trying to really push the elementary cleaners to get down the main buildings a little bit early, because we're looking for the mods to be turned over by mid-August, and we want to let our people get in to really get, get those all cleaned up. But the other thing we can do, if people haven't seen them lately, we certainly can schedule a time if you want to go take a walk through any of the, the buildings. I know some people saw Center, but Center's a little different because it's attached and it doesn't have the bathrooms.
Right.
I can't tell you how good the setups are in the detached ones with the bathrooms and everything, they're really complete, complete buildings, so if you want to go out and see any, just let me know, and I can meet you and give you a little tour. But I'll, I'll work on the fan speeds, I haven't heard about that, to be honest with you.
Got it, just checking.
Okay. All right. Meeting schedule.
Meeting schedule, so this is the last paper that was in your packet. This is for us to just be able to advertise on the website and through Chelmsford Telemedia. This is the proposed schedule for the next six months, we only do it six months at a time, in case things change. It keeps to traditional, you know, first and third Tuesdays of the month, meeting times will all be at six o'clock to be consistent. We've actually gotten very good feedback, I don't know if you have, from the schools and some parents on that, particularly ones that are going to come speak, it's easier for kids to be able to do that earlier than later. The only request, special request that I, I put on here is we would have been meeting on November seventh and then the twenty-first. I had planned to be away the week of the seventh, so I didn't know if you'd entertain moving that meeting to the fourteenth for me, just doing the second Tuesday of the month, so that I can be here, just in case anything's going on. But other than that, it sticks with the, the first and, and third meetings of the month.
Is there looking for a motion on that?
Just a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the school meeting scheduled July through December twenty-seventh.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any negative vote or abstention? Okay.
Thank you, we'll get those advertised on the sites. And the last item I'd put on the agenda was the conferences and field trips. We were anticipating a field trip might come in, and it did not before the, before we posted, so we have no, no field trip to review this evening on that front, no, no action item. And that concludes the new business.
Okay. Are there any liaison reports? Quiet time. All right. Any open items? Have one or two things come up? Anything else? Anything new based on tonight?
At some point in the summer, I don't know if we could talk about the status of the, the website, I know we've talked about it before, for the district, you know, just in terms of making sure it's updated and accessible in terms of information, I know it's, it's, it's not an easy site to navigate sometimes, so I know we've talked about it and looking into maybe doing some updates to it, so if we could talk about that as a group.
Sure. Just, we certainly can, but as, as we have feedback to, there's, there's kind of two different elements to it. One, I don't know if you've been on the website in the last probably week or so, but the template or the, kind of the look of the website is changing, we're updating the, the website itself, kind of the look and feel, a little more current and, and modern. That, the technology group is working on, and Bill Silver, our technology director, is actually tentatively going to be coming to the August meeting to do kind of a year wrap-up of technology and talk a little bit about what's on the agenda for the next time. So I know he'll be talking about, as one of the, kind of the social media pushes, the updates to the websites and things like that, so, but that will be more like the aesthetics, kind of look and feel of the site and how it's designed. The, most of the content does not come from the technology officer, it comes from the actual, say, curriculum coordinators in schools themselves, but I, we certainly can talk about it, and Lynda and I have talked about, meeting with the curriculum coordinators and, and having some focus over this next year on updating content and making it more user-friendly, so we can certainly talk about that.
I still want to put in my request once more to make the policies searchable.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a thing, we've got to really work on that. We've got to discuss policies in general. We've got to get...
Yeah, the, there's just no quick answer for it. The, the format of the, the way that we're saving them now is just, it's not a searchable format.
Right.
So we need to pick either a different product or a different format, and spend some time and money in, in doing that. But I do, I know that's a hanging-out-there issue.
I noticed that the website looks like Lowell's, which is very clean, I, I really enjoy the Lowell website, so if it's, you know, they're taking it from there, it's awesome.
I actually had nothing to do with that one.
It looks good. Well, Bill's from Lowell, I mean, you know, he's familiar with it.
Yeah, it's, they're all stock templates, it's the, there's only like two web companies now that schools use, and they give you, like, fifteen or twenty different things to look at.
It's just very clean.
They're all very clean.
Yeah.
And that one is, is pretty clean. What we have to work on now is not only the policies, but just all of our stuff, making it more searchable for the public, so that they can come in and just put in a keyword or find stuff, but I, I think people are going to like the format when they see it.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to say that hopefully the kids would win the Knowledge Bowl every year, because they were a huge hit in the parade.
Oh, yeah.
They were huge. You put them up front, the trophy.
It was...
Yeah, they did.
That's a heavy trophy.
It was a heavy trophy.
That's a heavy trophy. They did unbelievable, you're just kind of thinking back and talking to them.
Yeah.
And they were, I, I thought they did an awesome job, but they were just so impressed, you know, with, with doing that. So that is something we'll certainly celebrate, and...
No pressure.
No, I think both...
They need to win every year now.
Talking to both the, you know, the teachers and the kids at McCarthy and Parker, you know, they're interested in doing this earlier and almost kind of doing it kind of year-round. So, not year-round, not in the summer, but like in the fall and the spring, kind of gearing up for it, so I think this is going to be quite the hit.
They were quite proud.
We purchased both schools their own buzzers and stuff, so that they can actually have their own internal competitions, so we'll be ready for the, for the Knowledge Bowl next year.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, aye.
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 All right. Page four, Brian Deschler. Eighth grade, and it says high school. Is that an error?
Yeah, that's an error. Brian Deschler is a teacher at Chelmsford High School. He was at, this year, he was displaced down to the middle school, he was going to be, moved to Parker Middle School for the, for next school year, and I think that's where the mistake happened.
So he was at the high school?
He is at the high school currently.
Yeah, okay.
He was one of the, he was a math teacher that was reduced, so he was going over to fill a vacancy that we had at Parker, but he has accepted a job in another district as a math teacher back at a high school level.
Okay.
I forget the high school, but I think that's why there's a discrepancy on, on the two.
Okay.
But happy to answer any other questions you might have, but again, it's more for just recording purposes and keeping you in the loop with personnel transactions.
Nice to see Alison Wazak hired as a kindergarten teacher. She, she's a graduate of Chelmsford School since she did her student teaching at Biim, and now she's going to be a kindergarten teacher.
Good. I know we're not on the good news section of the, the agenda anymore, but on a positive note, kindergarten-related, the, the last set of modular classrooms arrived today at Harrington.
Passed them on the rotary this afternoon.
Yeah, there were only three of them were supposed to come, but all eight of them